Pledge allegiance and get going.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
Public for which it stands.
Okay, we have a quorum, so we can get going. First thing is to approve the agenda. Does anyone have any questions or additions on the agenda? If not, I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
Second by Sean Ryan. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposition? Okay. Agenda is approved. Three, zero. First thing on the agenda, a resolution requesting fans of track. Okay. Ken, you're taking this one?
I will. We're going high-tech here tonight with the map on the overhead. Council's seen requests previously for property that's gone tax forfeiture, and in the past, we've never recommended that we try to acquire one of these. This outlot in particular is for an outlot in Raven Stream Village, second edition. You can see on the map here, Raven Stream Elementary. So just to the northwest there, we have a parcel of property that actually has a city stormwater pond on it, and the remainder is actually a delineated wetland. This property was intended to be donated to the city, I should say dedicated, not donated, to the city as part of the plating process back nearly 10 years ago now. The developer, Geiger Development, who at the time was called Raven Stream Village Development, Inc., obviously with the economy going bad, had a hard time paying their taxes on that property and some other properties in the area, lost other properties back to the bank. This one got lost in the shuffle back in 2011. Scott Riggs and I actually worked directly with Dwayne Geiger, who was representative of the owner at that time, to get that obtained. We were unsuccessful at that time, so it did go tax forfeiture to the state, actually just in May of this 2015. Contact of the county at that point indicated that we were interested in obtaining the property for a stormwater pond. They indicated that we could acquire it by purchase for $100 plus another little over $300 in fees as a public purpose. Now, upon hearing that, we've had discussions in the past that there's two different ways that tax forfeiture property can be acquired by a city. Either we consider it public purpose, which is anything that the city could determine to be a public purchase purpose, we can purchase, whether that be for parkland, et cetera. But in this case, statute allows property to be acquired potentially for free of any charge if we determine it's for a public use. And a public use is specific to things such as stormwater ponding, et cetera. And you'll see on the very last page of my memo, it names some of the other areas, walking and biking trails, fire stations, other public improvements that benefit the entire population or a particular neighborhood. So it actually specifically says that drainage areas and storm sewers are a public use. So that is what we're requesting conveyance at no charge from Scott County. It's up to the county board to determine if they want to dedicate this to us free of charge. So Scott and I drafted the resolution requesting this property for a stormwater pond, which is how we've been maintaining it for the past few years. And this would be considered by the county board at their next meeting, and it's up to them to determine if they're going to allow it to be acquired free of charge, or if they're going to want the $400.65 in total. So either way, we need the stormwater pond.
Okay. Any questions?
So when we make a motion for this, do we include either/or, whether it's free or the $400? Because obviously...
Well, we're going to submit the resolution to them at this time. Basically, if they don't choose to give it free of charge, it doesn't matter. They'll just say you can purchase it for that. So I suppose in the motion, we want to acquire it either way, but my recommendation is to submit this resolution, and we need to acquire it either way, so maybe add that to the motion.
Well, I want it.
The last whereas of your resolution?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Attempting to acquire it for free. We will also probably draft a letter under the mayor's signature requesting the county board approve this, or have the board approve it at no cost to the city, and do everything we can in that fashion.
Right.
If in the end we're unsuccessful, then we still need to pay that dollar amount so that we have that within our abilities to handle drainage in the neighborhood.
Right. But alls I'm trying to do is prevent it from having to come back in two weeks at the next council meeting.
It doesn't. It doesn't have to.
It doesn't. Okay.
We've asked for it free, and they told us already that the cost is $400.65. We can make the request that it would be free, but that's up to the county board.
I see. Okay.
You think they should do that after they, with the sales tax issue screwing up one side of the city?
Ken and I haven't talked, but I think it's worth us attaching a letter under your request that the council took an action. You'd like for them to provide that free of charge. It's for a public purpose. It should have been dedicated prior to that, and that you'd like them to give strong consideration to not charging anything, and at least avail ourselves of that opportunity.
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions for Ken? Okay. If not, I guess I'll look for a motion.
So moved.
A motion by Sean Ryan.
Second.
Second by Dave Brusick to approve the resolution for this tax forfeiture stormwater purposes. Any other questions? Not? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposition? Okay. Passes four, zero. Mike, are you taking the next one?
Yes. In closing your package tonight is a recommendation from John Utley, our bond counsel, who advises the city on any bonding issue. And what he's recommending, based on currently what's ongoing in the bond world, is a recommendation that we adopt the enclosed resolution and policy that basically provides for post-compliance procedures and policy for dealing with tax-exempt governmental bonds to ensure that they remain, that the use of the proceeds are tax-exempt and finance bond-related facilities. There's a requirement that if the Internal Revenue Service is to take a look at it and asks whether we have this adopted, at present we do not. So he's recommending the adoption of, as I said, the resolution and the accompanying policy that's been prepared for this. And what it does is that it ensures to the end that we will carry out all of our bond compliance responsibilities, and that we will do things in accordance with this policy, to make sure that everything stays tax-exempt.
Obviously, we don't have a policy now, but
No.
Once we pass this, let's say we pass this, we shouldn't have to worry about...
There isn't anything that we have been doing that really hasn't been compliant. This just puts in place a formal policy to ensure that we are doing what's there. And so technically, it kind of falls on Patty and my shoulders in working with bond counsel and our financial advisors to make sure that we're doing all the correct things on the issuance of the bonds, the spend down, you know, the interest earnings processes, the reporting, that we're doing all those kind of things procedurally properly.
Okay. I mean, we've actually been doing those things, so...
But if you remember, we had that look back here, I think it was early last year, we had a look back on something that went kind of beyond any of our involvement, that had a question on some facets dealing with bonding, and we had to make a judgment call. And we indicated that we thought we had been compliant based on everything we could find, but it's the kind of thing that we now have a policy to follow, and, you know, for compliance-type items.
Any questions?
Do arbitrage reports on the bonds?
Oh, yes. We work with Springstead and do all of our reporting and our spend down and all of those things.
Okay. Any other questions? If not, I guess I'll make a motion to approve the policy and procedures for IRS requirements.
Second.
Second by Amy Jerk. Any other comments? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposition? Okay. Passes four, zero. Next on the agenda, Main Street.
I'm not going to do an awful lot on this one, other than to kind of briefly bring you up to speed. If you recall, back on April 20th, Sean, I think was the only one that wasn't here for this, is we had Chris Cavendish, and Chris went through the whole Mindot Main Street downtown project. And so I put out a handout just as a reminder for those that didn't have their materials from April 20th, that if you recall, we met on April 14th. He was in on April 20th to do a presentation of the council. And generally in this discussion, and this goes back even further, that in, what was it, January of 2013, we met with Mindot, that they sent us a letter indicating that they were tentatively planning for a paving project in 2017 or 2018. We reviewed that, responded back in February, indicating to them is we needed to undertake some camera analysis on our conditions of our sanitary sewer. And we came back, which dates back to original construction, back into in and around the 1921 timeframe. So when you look at that with where we sit today, that we're upwards of, you know, right about 95 years old with our underground infrastructure predominantly sewer and water main back in that timeframe. When we met last year with the staff in Mindot again in July of last, or 2013, you know, we talked about taking a look at not just having an overlay project, but being able to figure out how we can ultimately replace the sanitary sewer main, which is our primary concern. Water's not far behind it, but because of the age. And so what we attempted to do, again with a follow-up meeting that we had in April this year, was to take a look at that. And I've attached the minutes from that meeting, and we went through all of that, as I said, back at our April 20th meeting. But in follow-up conversations, as you recall, Mindot indicated that they're not really interested in doing a urban reconstruction project, and probably would not have funding until outward of 2025 or beyond. And the alternative to that, and the fact that we need to replace the infrastructure, and they don't think that the 17 or 18 overlay really shouldn't work unless we combine it with what we're wanting to do, is that they have tentatively programmed our project, you know, just tentatively in their 10-year plan for about 2020. And taking a look at that, that's probably the earliest that they could program funds, that if we were to take the lead or be kind of the key project leader on the complete project, coordinated with them, just as if they were doing the project, although our name would appear on the overall plans and specs and all of that. But it certainly wouldn't be done without their intricate involvement and interaction with us, that if we looked at the earliest of 2020, we probably could get upwards, or they could program about $1 million a year, beginning in 2020, '21, '22, and '23. And that they could fund participation in a project. If we took the lead, we financed it, we led it. And in considering that, one would say, well, why would you want a front end for Mindot? Well, we wouldn't do it unless, from a bonding standpoint and a design standpoint, that whatever monies we would borrow, that we would borrow and have a cost of borrowing to add to that, so that it really didn't cost us anything, and that we would want to have firm guarantees that their funding is available and capable of being provided, that I wouldn't do any kind of project where we had to worry about annual appropriation decisions that Mindot would be making, or that we'd be at the whim of the legislature or any of those processes, that in this action that you're considering tonight, all it is is an indication of a willingness to take the lead, predicated on a lot of things coming together, primarily the agreement and the planning and the timelines and all those kinds of things. But if we choose not to do anything, and we sit back and wait for them, as I said, you're looking at 2025. We've talked about our infrastructure right now is about 95 years old. You get to 2020, it's upwards of about 100 years old. You know, we're sitting in a position, and I think we had discussion when Chris was here, is that how long do we continue to roll the dice with our sanitary sewer line underneath Main Street, that if it goes down, or we have a collapse, or there's any problem in, let's say, the middle of winter, and we have to go out and reconstruct that and repair that sewer line, then not only are we repairing the sewer line, and at best, the difficulty is, is you're not able to take care of anything up and down the rest of the street. You're focused on only that one piece. But you're having to repair from the original excavation to the repair, all the way back to surfacing. And I can assure you, Mindot will have design standards for the reconstruction of that road that we tear into, that will make it a brand-new road that we would effectively pay for with our sanitary sewer project or water main project. Excuse me. We could just as well have a water main break as well down there and deal with the same thing. And that, you know, it's not too heartwarming to think that that could happen in the middle of winter, and we've got to take care of more than just the replacement or the repair of the infrastructure below ground. So the document that you have in front of you tonight is really kind of a resolution that basically is a support of the proposed improvement project. And I've provided you a copy of the map of what Mindot is looking for tentatively in District 7 for 2020 through 2025. And our project is tentatively slotted in that 2020 timeframe. But this basically indicates the council's interest in willing to take the lead, to administer it through the delegated contract process, finance in part through the local government advanced agreement between Mindot and the city, and it would provide for construction in approximately 2020. So all this is really serving that as an indicator to Mindot District 7 that we're willing to take that lead, to get this thing off the ground, to begin the formal planning, both with Mindot and in all of our community businesses and organizations and others that are eventually going to be impacted this, because we're looking at street lighting, we're looking at streetscape, and you're basically looking at from building wall to building wall. A lot of those service lines and other things down there are all original construction dating back to the 1920s. And so this is just the start. It's not any final commitment. It's not any final decision-making. Eventually, when and if we're able to put all these parameters together, then there's a formal agreement under the statutes that you're required to enter into with Mindot. So this does not commit you at this point other than it is an indicator to Mindot that we're willing to begin the process and the planning to hopefully try to hit that target.
And I think that's something we kind of talked at the strategic meeting, too, as one of the items that we needed to start looking at now for future. You know, what do we need to do now to get things going in five or 10 years?
On the last page of the materials we provided as an additional handout tonight, you can see that there's a breakdown between the streets and the storm, and the sanitary, the water main, the streetscape, and the lighting. And these are preliminary conceptual estimates at the present time. We've also talked about that there's grant funding that we can apply for as early as this December, with grant application due in January of 2016, that would provide funding at its earliest in 2020, that might be additional funds that we can use to reduce some of our project costs that you see in front of you. But if we don't go after that funding, we won't get it, and it wouldn't be here until after 2020. And so they're that far out in the application process to try to go after additional funds for this.
And that's federal funds you're talking about?
Yes.
Grant money?
So it's basically, you know, the easy way to kind of visualize this is it's one of our local annual projects, and we typically do something typically in the range of, you know, a million and a half to a million six or seven, that this one will be like a bigger project on steroids for us for the summer and working with them. But it'll be a combination of engineering inspection, both from the city and Mindot, and a lot of work with our businesses, because they look at accessibility and streetscape and all those pieces, and access management. And, you know, they will still control those same elements, because it is a state highway, as they normally would if it was their project, but they're just working in conjunction with us. And so, albeit that one would normally think, well, it's a city project, we get to take total control. Not the case, that we're working with them from a jurisdictional perspective, that there are certain things that we will do and that we have control over versus there are parts that, you know, they won't give up and that they will control quite extensively, because it is a state highway.
If by chance it would go to an urban redo or whatever you mentioned, you know, like in 2025 or 20...
Reconstruct.
What kind of funding do you get from the state when that happens? Do you know? Is it...
It wouldn't be any different than what we're looking at in 2020, that all it would provide for is they're saying that they don't think they could conceptually come up with a pot of money to do it all at one time, any earlier than at best 2025. If we take the lead in and around about 2020, they can come up with about a million dollars a year that they could provide for funding to commit to the project, even though we would have to finance it in the course of one year. But in the repayment streams under the bonds that we'd have to borrow to do the project, we would take into account their repayment timeframes and the cost of borrowing and all of that, to make sure that they were paying their fair share plus interest in the process.
What are the chances of them doing that? Have they done that before? Is that pretty standard?
They were proposing that to us as a result of our meeting, and that's why we're kind of out in front of you, that, you know, they're basically saying, well, when do you want to do the project? I mean, they know that the subsurface and the utilities down below are an integral part of this project. It's ready for an overlay now, that you drive part of that right now. You can see it's in bad shape. Storm sewer needs to be replaced, the water and the utilities. And so they're looking at us, well, when do you want to do it? Well, do we roll the dice and just sit there and wait till Mother Nature decides that she's going to do whatever she's going to do? Or do we try to, looking at the fact that we're coming up on nearly 100 years of age, do we get aggressive and try to plan for that and do that properly? Because you don't want me coming to you in the middle of winter saying, we got a problem in downtown New Prague, that we got a detour of the traffic, and not only do we have to replace the water sewer line, whatever the problem is, we also have to pay for everything from there all the way up to the surface
Right.
and put it back in that original condition. Because those would not be the normal component pieces that we would pay for. The state would be paying for that if they were doing the project.
Any idea of a timeframe that it would take to, once they started that? I was just thinking in the contract, you know, you have Dozenke in September, if that would still have this Main Street tore up?
That could, there's no guarantees. We're not far enough in those discussions, but there's a good likelihood that that's going to have to be an issue, that we take a look at it in all of our planning efforts, that there may not be able to be any guarantees.
Right. Or just as you kind of designed that program, if you kept that in mind, that...
Well, it's one thing, you know, we try to do that right now, even on our smaller projects, is we try to phase what the contractor gets into, what he has tore up and what's open. The difficulty is, is that it's a little easier and a little less challenging dealing with the number of residents that you have that live within a particular block, as to whether they have back alley access, or whether they park at the end of the street and they walk in for a half a block for a period of time in there. The difficulty in trying to answer your question and to provide any kind of guarantees is, you put, what, 10 to $12,000, 10 to 12,000 people plus, in a construction zone that isn't quite ready for that, that just doesn't work.
No, it doesn't work. I'm just thinking more for the businesses who will already be affected throughout the term of the construction. And now you take their busiest weekend away, too, where maybe, I mean, if we're taking the lead on this and trying to draw it up, I just want to make sure that...
Those are...
There's no guarantees. I understand that. But maybe you guys could frame it with Mindot.
Those are all of the elements that, quite frankly, we've had discussion about right now. But until you get into some of that very intricate, detailed planning, that you try to take a look at that, I think if I'm remembering correctly, is that we're talking to Project Ken, the distance-wise, we're right at or just under about a mile in length. And most of you experienced the Mindot project out east. That was challenging when they came in. And I wasn't here for that, but I've heard enough horror stories that, you know, from the standpoint that you get things opened up, and the, you know, weather impacts it, and then the contractor leaves the job site or whatnot. And, you know, you have a completion date, and that's really all you can control, other than how much you allow to be done or opened up at any one given time in that process. But I think this is a project of the size and the magnitude that I think Chris and the state believe can be done within one year. That I don't think it's the kind of thing that you want to have the downtown closed for two years. And so obviously, every effort would have to be made to get it started from the perspective of bid and under contract and ready to go, whatever the earliest opportunity is come spring, and trying to schedule that and hope and pray you've got good weather, and do the best you can to manage that. Probably would have to start, and I don't know this for certain, probably on the west end and work in an easterly direction, because most of that big piping is down at that south end. As we move in that easterly direction, there's gravity flow that comes down there for both sanitary and storm. And so, you know, most of the pipe sizing, you start typically at the largest end of the project and work the other way. And so all of the things that you can reasonably think of or want us to consider, we've already had some discussion and dialogue trying to look at that. And not that those issues aren't important, but right now it's difficult to give you an answer until you get farther in the details of more of that process and planning, interacting with the community, interacting with the businesses, interacting with Mindot, interacting with the utility companies. It's going to take quite a project team to do this, that this will be about, if in fact, we can all hold on and get to that point, and it happens about that time, it'll be about the third project I've done in a downtown that's kind of a complete reconstruct from building wall to building wall. And they're very challenging projects, but there is no easy way to do them, that you go down to replace sanitary and sewer, and storm sewer, you're at the lowest points of the project construction when you get down to doing that, especially at the depths that are there through the downtown right now, to handle the flow and the connection that we've done. Thank goodness, we've done all of the side street work, so we don't have to come back and really do that and cause any further delays, that those are all done as of right now. But it will truly be a challenge as you take a look at access, building access, property access, that Mindot will be looking at all of those features, ADA accessibility, that things that really haven't been dealt with until you come back and you redo the entire downtown infrastructure. So this action is basically a resolution, like I said, to get the ball rolling and indicate to Mindot that we're willing to be a player in the process, we're willing to take the lead. Now, let's figure out what that means, and let's get ready and start putting things together and talk about what would this look like, and how do we put together that timeline for the next few years? At some point, we would come to you with wanting to put together probably a downtown committee that would have input into a lot of different features and facets. We're not ready for that yet, but that will come at a point in the planning process, that we think that that's important, that we have that dialogue and interaction, you know, so that when we're looking at streetscape and lighting and other things, is that we've got opportunities for input and feedback, so that we can bring you options and alternatives and costs associated with those different elements. Most of the water, the sanitary, the storm sewer, and the other underground stuff, we have to have and have to deal with. But the pieces that make the end project that livable, aesthetic, and interactive with the different modes of transportation, that's where the public can have some input into that process.
Good.
This project is not unlike streetscape that was done in the late 80s. That was a huge project. But it's only compared to what's planned for this one. It's small. Because there, too, they did a small portion around Main Street and Central to replace a large sanitary sewer that was collapsing. It was a huge project. And we still have to deal with all those darn plates that are causing our shifting of the streets.
So I can't come to you and say that things are falling apart, and they will tomorrow, they will 60 days from now, two years from now. We just don't know. But we know we're living on borrowed time at 95 years, that anything can go wrong, and it typically does when you least expect it. And the cost of what we would have to pay for versus trying to get it programmed at a proper time, that's kind of the $100,000 question, that we have to ask you, what's your comfort level, and what do you want us to do?
I think it's a no-brainer. You have to forward. I'd like to see the 2020 date before the 2025.
Well, I think I agree. I think that's kind of what we talked at the strategic meeting, is that was one of the, the goals was the downtown area. And if we can take the lead on it and maybe get some federal money also besides the state package, you know, that all helps everything out. So, you know, I think it's something that we should move forward on, since kind of that was one of our goals in our strategic plan. Any other questions for Mike or anything? If not, I guess I'll look for a motion to approve this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Amy Jerk, second by Dave Brusick. There's no other further comment? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposition? Okay. Passes four, zero. Let the fun begin. Mike, I think you're taking the next one also?
The next two, that the next one is ACH origination agreement with the State Bank in New Prague. We've had one previously. They're in the process of updating that. As you can see from Patty's memo, they have new security provisions and requirements associated with how we handle certain banking activities and actions to ensure that security for both the city and the customers that we interact with, whether that be payroll or other payments, those kinds of things, that the bank and the city is on board with ensuring that we've got as much security... ensuring that we've got as much security with usernames, password, processes and that that regulate and control that. So, it's really just a simple updating of the current agreement that we have. As Patty brought that to me, it has not been reviewed by Scott as of yet, so in your approval tonight, if you are to do that, we'd ask that it be contingent upon just a quick review by Scott, just to make sure there's no major items that stand out to him or that he believes cause us any concerns or issues. That's about all I can tell you about it.
Yeah. Any questions? Okay.
It's if we want to continue to do business, we have to sign the agreement.
Okay. Yeah, I guess I'll look for a motion to approve the agreement with State Bank upon our city attorney's review.
So moved.
Second.
I got a motion by Sean Ryan, second by Dave Brujic. Any further comments? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposition? Next thing on the agenda, Malastrana.
What you have in front of you is a release of the development agreement between the city of New Prague and the Throw Company, who is the developer on the Malastrana project. And as you can see from my materials, this goes back to the timeframe, February of 2002. The city was involved in providing tax increment assistance for a major renovation of the Malastrana Healthcare Center Nursing Home and the addition of a 34-unit assisted living project. City created a TIF district, they did it as a pay-as-you-go so that they paid it back based on the creation of the tax base that was generated from that. The city made payments back to the developer for certain development costs that were eligible to be incurred with, by them as part of the housing project. That was formerly TIF District 7-1. That project, as you recall, we made our last payment in December of 2013. Council formally closed out the TIF district in December of that year where we adopted a resolution terminating the TIF district and directing the decertification. The Throw property or the Throw Company is in the process of selling the property to another owner, I think it's called the Monarch Company, and that closing is scheduled for the end of June. And so, I got a call from the owner of the Throw Company as they take a look at this. Number one, there was a prohibition against the transfer of the property or assignment of the agreement without the prior written approval of the city, which is what was needed to ensure that they complied with their obligations under the development agreement, which they did and completed all along. As they get ready to sell it, they're not wanting to have the developers' agreement and any responsibilities associated with that continue or act as an impediment for the new purchaser of the property. So, in reviewing this with the city attorney, we both determined that they have complied with all the components and requirements of the development agreement. We paid out our last TIF payments in 2013, you closed out the TIF district, so there really is nothing that needs to remain in full force and effect. And so, what he has quickly drafted in order to provide to them before their closing at the end of June here is, as you can see on the release, it basically certifies that the tax increment obligations have been paid in full, the district described in the agreement has been decertified, no obligations between the city and the developer are known to exist, and accordingly, the developers' agreement is hereby terminated and released and is of no further force or effect after today's date.
Anyone have any questions?
Yeah, do we know anything about the new company?
Very little, that they are going to be taking over the Mankato operations that are also under the control of the Throw Company in Mankato, as well as our local facility. They're not expecting any significant changes. Couple of gentlemen that I guess are out of Chicago that are now going into business and are purchasing the company from Chris Throw, and will be managing both the Mankato and the New Prague operations.
Any other questions? If not, I guess I'll make a motion to approve the release of the development agreement.
Second.
Second by Sean Ryan. Any other further comments or questions? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposition? Okay, passes 4-0. Next, consent agenda. Anything on the consent agenda? Any questions? Not, I guess I'll look at a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Sean Ryan, second by Dave Brujic. If there's no other comments or questions, all in favor of approving the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposition? Okay, passes 4-0. Miscellaneous, Ken, anything?
Nope, I don't have anything.
What about your pickleball courts?
I guess I can give a quick update on that. If you looked at the park board minutes, you can see that Dan Poles came to talk to the park board about pickleball, trying to garner up some interest and see if he can get some local donations or funds for striping. Originally, they looked at Northside Park, but the court's a little wavy, so they're looking at Heritage Park Basketball Court and the new basketball court over at...
Foundry.
Foundry Hill Park. And you can have the extra stripes on there, it doesn't affect playing basketball at all by any means, so that's kind of the direction they're heading. I don't know if they're going to be able to come up with funding for that, but we didn't have anything budgeted, so it was like, told them that, okay, we're okay with it, we'll work with you as long as you can find funding to pay for the striping and everything. So, it's about $350 a court to have a company come in and do that.
Someone explain pickleball to me now?
It's basically a combination of ping pong and tennis on a short court with a wiffle ball and a little paddle.
And a net?
And a net.
Apparently the fastest growing sport among seniors in the U.S.
Yeah, so you probably won't know about it yet. Dave and I are probably thinking, well, we're...
I didn't know what it was either.
I didn't either, when Dan talked to me about it.
Basically, if we turn, if you take half of a tennis court, cut it in half and play sideways with a net that's about how?
Like, I forget, three inches lower than a tennis net, something like that?
With paddles similar to kind of a racquetball...
Smaller, not quite a tennis.
A shorter handle with a big paddle, so to speak, with a wiffle ball.
Okay.
And I don't know all the rules, but I guess you basically hit over the net, it's got to hit once and then you got to hit it and within the area and...
Okay.
Great.
I have enough time hitting the ball that's not moving.
Google it.
Yeah.
Good YouTube videos out there. Is there?
Is there? Anything else, Ken?
No, nothing.
Okay. Patrick, you got anything? What's that?
You got it.
Yes, I heard that, my neighbor was in it and she said they had a great time and it was a good performance, so, good. Mary Jo? Mike?
Just a quick update on kind of a utility issue that we're wrestling with a little bit, has to deal with kind of cleaning up, we've been doing since last fall, kind of an audit of all of our utility accounts that some of you may or may not recall, since 2008, since I came till now, we've been through about four different individuals that have served in our utility billing position within the utilities. Suffice it to say that with the latest person we have, we've discovered some inconsistencies in an area that we're trying to wrestle with. There is not sufficient language in the city's ordinances under wastewater. We believe that past practice has been a good indicator of how it's generally been dealt with. We've uncovered upwards of 20 to 30 accounts that will probably need some adjustment, and it has to deal with the application of the base rate plus the rate per thousand in dealing with the wastewater charge. You go back pre-2008 when the base rate was a dollar 50 and the rate per thousand was maybe, I think, $3 or something compared to where we're at right now, there's a bit of a difference. And so, as the person we hired last June, as she's been dealing with various issues with various customers, it became apparent that we were lacking some inconsistencies in how that part of the wastewater process was being charged on an account basis. As an example, on a single family, you've got a unit cost of the base charge plus the rate per thousand based on your use, and that use is calculated for November, December, January, and then applied through the rest of the course of the year. Okay, then you've got duplexes, fourplexes, eightplexes, as high as Phillips Square Apartments with about 55 units. And so, the question is, in taking a look at that, is that we've got upwards of, I want to say, 2,700 different utility accounts, and as I said, we've discovered about 20 to 30 of them that we're not sure that there was the consistency in that base charge being applicable to those 20 to 30 the way that we are with all of the other accounts. And so, as we take a look at that, we've had one customer that's been fairly concerned with how it's being administered, and I said, you're welcome to do what you need to do. Then I said, my work with the staff and I will be brought to the council just as soon as we get some language drafted, because it's not in the resolution under the rate structure, nor is it in the language of the city code. And if you remember, back in 2014, I believe we made some changes in ensuring that our billing, we went from the five months down to three months, commercial industrial paid what they used, then we went to, if somebody didn't have any usage for November, December, January, that you had them take care of it based on what their flow was and up to a certain maximum amount of flow. So, we've incrementally tried cleaning up things that aren't necessarily addressed in writing or in the ordinance format, and so, this may be one that we have to return to the table and get you to back up based on what has generally been the past practice, but it will result in obviously some changes on billing accounts where in some cases, if they've had two different users, but there's only been one account, there may have only been one base charge and there should be two base charges. So, there's a number of those that we're trying to get ironed out and taken care of and dealt with, but I'll probably come to you with some language changes, ordinance changes to address that.
Anything else?
Nope, that's all I've got.
Okay. Sean?
Nope.
Dave?
Nope.
Amy?
Do we have any update with the school, how their process is going?
All we know of is tomorrow, Ken and Mark, I was hoping Mark was going to be here and that he's on the team, that they're going to take a look at two or three schools tomorrow?
They're going to Prior Lake, Shakopee and Edina. I think they're older facilities for the most part, I'll find out exactly what they are tomorrow, but start off with that, and then I think there's three hour, hour and a half meetings scheduled between now and basically mid-July after that initial tour. And that's all I know at this point, start off with that tour tomorrow in the morning, all morning and go from there, so...
We're still trying to coordinate with USA Aquatics to find out if they can bring some information to the table and that we can maybe set up as part of that meeting process, a way to have some dialogue to at least explore some options and some alternatives and see what maybe can be done there, come back and report to the council as to whether that's a workable process and what do we want to try to protect or ensure that we'd like to see happen as part of the project. So, first thing is to make sure that as they finish up their initial tour tomorrow, and I don't know if you have more scheduled, I don't know that's totally defined...
I don't know that there's any more tours scheduled, no, I have no idea.
But to at least get USA Aquatics to talk about what are some of the ancillary things that might be able to be attached to an indoor pool that we think of that might provide the council with some alternatives for outdoor options.
Yeah.
We did, that they had a committee of about, what, four or five people, they offered it, we took it to the park board, I don't believe there was any, anyone that could participate under the schedule of what they've got laid out to do during the course of the day. Mark, I know, is going from the council, so that, and Ken is going, so that gives us a little bit of involvement in the process.
Good. Well, maybe we'll hear a little bit more update at the, in our July, first July, early meeting with...
No more at that point.
Good, and I'm glad you're keeping US Aquatics, because I know we do have some, we pay prepaid to have some more analysis done, right?
Well, we didn't prepay, we had a contract that had monies remaining from it...
Right.
And so, we've got assets that we can use to take care of that.
Yep. Good. Anything else, Amy? I don't have anything, so I guess I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second by Dave Brujic, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposition? We're out of here, thank you everyone.